My Father.
Good morning in heaven. Hello, Mary Elaine.
Thank you. Be done on other purposes. Give us the air and every day. And forgive us our trespasses. And we give those a trench against us. Leaders of mine are intentionally. But they're not for people. The land is a kingdom. I know what to do with the world that I have.
Praise your legions.
To the ground. To the United States of America. To the Republic for which we stand. A nation under God, indivisible, but who would ever sin justice for all? Will it land there?
Oh, thank you.
Uh, you ready?
Go ahead and open the mail.
All right.
Is that kind of silly what's going on?
Yeah, it's kind of silly. Yeah.
You're good.
Madam Clerk, will you go ahead and call the role, please?
Andrew.
Here.
Hello, Bill.
Yes, here.
Doctor Miller.
Yes. Guy Wood.
Heather Lee.
Yeah.
Miss Miller.
Yeah.
It's present.
Thank you. So we have a complete quorum and we can resume business as usual. Uh, so our next item of business will be to um do approval of the minutes. You have both sets of minutes from our previous two city council meetings, the ones from the um our last one from October, this third week of October wasn't in there. So you have two sets that are in your packet.
If these are the same that was sent to us, I move that we approve the minutes of the last meetings uh that you sent us.
There's a second.
Second.
There's a second. Madam Clerk, will you call the role?
That's correct.
Yes.
The Miller.
Yes.
This David.
Yes.
Doctor Miller.
Yes.
This is Dana.
Yes.
Psycholomia.
Uh, yes.
Six years.
Motion fast.
They'll business financial update.
So I'm not sure Mr. Turner anywhere. Let me see. You don't call this. Yeah. Right. Our next order of business, we'll get moving along. We're gonna jump into a financial update with Mr. Turner.
Okay. I'm just gonna keep this brief. Um. First thing is that we're continuing to pay down debt. Um, in October, we paid a hundred and ninety-two thousand, little over a hundred and ninety-two thousand in payroll taxes, back payroll taxes. And we paid two hundred and nineteen thousand in September. And um me and the mayor have been talking, so we we wanna this is gonna be one of our main priorities, is paying down payroll taxes. Uh, we expect a significant amount for our um property taxes this month in November. And so we hope that we can make another significant payment in November on the property tax. So we're doing pretty good on property taxes. Um, we're current on all the payment plans. And we pay the current payroll taxes as they come due. So after each payroll, uh, IRs is due five days later, we pay the IRs. Um. State taxes are due the fifteenth of the following month, we pay those. So we're up to date on all this stuff. We're up to date on our payroll taxes. And as far as uh operations are concerned, we've decreased um our expenditures, operating expenditures by thirty-three percent since July. In July, our expenditures were eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand. Uh, in August, they were five hundred and eighty-four thousand. And in September, they were five hundred and seventy-four thousand. And so you have the September reports, and so those are the ones that have been reconciled. So from July, July is eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand down to September is five hundred and seventy-four thousand. That's a thirty-three percent increase, uh decrease. So that's, yeah.
Mostly decrease.
Yeah. In October, I haven't started, we haven't started the bank reconciliations and account reconciliations yet. But as far uh what I've looked at so far, October is around five hundred and forty thousand. So we're starting to see a steady decline in operating expenses. And so and and hopefully we can maintain this decrease in expenditures because that allows us to make these payments and
Take some of those.
Yeah. So right now, that they, the payroll taxes in particular, they aren't increasing. So they're steadily coming down and we're paying them on time. And so we're not, we're currently right now concerned with any increase in the taxes. Just trying to see if it was anything else.
What's our, what's our total debt now?
I I don't, we haven't, uh, we haven't updated anything around regarding the claims I'm meant to give. Yeah, I I
Print out.
Yeah, I I'll try to get you one. Yeah, I'll I'll try to get you one next.
If we can do that monthly, that'll help us. You know?
Yes, sir.
I think part of it, part of it, I mean, it is visible in that financial report um to get the page. I think it's the first page that has our account summaries on there. You're able to see what you're able to see that.
Well, one of the things I I want to say probably important for the record, uh, please address these in these meetings as claims and not and not debts. Um, the pending litigation regarding some of these claims, if you as if you take on the language as a debt, you're saying that you owe it. And they would use that as in court against us saying that uh, you've already admitted that we supposed to pay you all of it. And so once Turner, when he sends these out, he says claims, he didn't say debts and what we owe. Uh, there's, there are some, there are some claims that we know that we owe absolutely, we must turn us talked about it. But there are some that the city is disputing. And so in this, in this forum, we would please use terms like claims versus a here are a list of debts.
And and to add, the ones that we're disputing won't be on the list anyways. Uh, I think that's it. But yeah, I just wanted to let you know our expense, we we've cut our expenditures significantly since July.
Good.
And uh, we we had, I think, an operating loss in August. But we had a uh operating gain uh five hundred, well, let me see, a hundred.
A little a hundred thousand dollars.
We had operating gain of about five hundred thousand dollars in in September. And we should see another one in October. So hopefully we can continue this stream. That's it. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Moving along, we can get into our first order of new business, which in a sense is still part of the conversation on our finances that you, this is a much more condensed version of some over budget items that are listed in the financial report. So of this past week, a member from the Arkansas State Legislative Audit Committee was here and we talked about corrective action plan. What are some of the things that we can do here in Helena to make sure that we have our operating uh finances at optimum level? And so what I've talked to Mr. Turner about, if you look on page one, this is an overspending summary table, and this information again is direct, it is in your, it's in the packet for the city council meeting tonight of materials. But these numbers are coming from the financial report. So after going through our finances from basically January through this month of September, and I want to read these so some of our folks at home can also hear exactly some of the, what some of the line items read. So city contract labor, thirty-seven thousand dollars and three hundred eighty-three cents over our budget of twelve thousand. Administrative department overtime, five thousand four hundred ninety dollars over our budget of ten thousand. Administrative general supplies, twenty thousand dollars and eight hundred, twenty thousand, eight hundred twenty-five dollars over our budget of three thousand five hundred. Administrative office supplies, twenty thousand dollars, twenty thousand four hundred, three dollars over our budget of twelve thousand five hundred. Administrative cable, email, three thousand one hundred seventy-six dollars over our budget of eight thousand. Administrative cellular service, twelve thousand two hundred forty-seven dollars over our budget of twenty-five thousand. Administrative telephone service, nine thousand four hundred ten dollars over our budget of thirty-eight thousand, three hundred sixty-four dollars. Administrative election expenses, fourteen thousand seven hundred sixty-two dollars over budget of two thousand nine hundred fifty-three dollars. Administrative grant expenses, nineteen thousand five hundred four dollars over our budget. That um that number wasn't originally listed in our reporting for uh our budget for this year, but uh we incurred some of those fees. Code enforcement, contract labor, nine thousand dollars over budget. Sanitation department, contract labor, one hundred sixty-six thousand dollars over budget of fifty-five thousand. Sanitation department rental, a hundred twenty-four thousand nine hundred seventy-five dollars over budget. Sanitation department travel, forty-seven thousand six hundred fifty-six dollars over budget of eighty thousand dollars. Street department gas and oil, thirty-six thousand four hundred eighty-three dollars over forty thousand dollars. Um, street department supplies, general, eighteen thousand two hundred forty dollars over budget of fourteen thousand nine hundred fifty-three dollars. Street department materials, sixteen thousand seven hundred thirty-three dollars over budget of five thousand three hundred twenty dollars. And street department rentals, forty-one thousand four hundred seven dollars over budget. So that's a lot of over budget. Lot, lot of over budget. And as I was going and I wanted to, I want to make sure, that's a total. So I mean, not skip, uh, I mean, I skipped. That's a total of five hundred eighty-three thousand dollars, five hundred eighty-three thousand, nine hundred twenty-nine dollars over budget. And that's just from January to our past month of September. So not including where we were in October, um, not including November, and obviously we haven't gotten to December yet. So the approach that this, the approach that was stated in the corrective action plan is obviously we have to dial back some of these expenses. And I dare say that some of these expenses are line items that we can take out based on some of the employees that we currently have on payroll. Um, and I also know that as we, you all have been here, there are certain situations and circumstances that require emergency spending. But without this including fire, uh, without this including fire overtime, police overtime, and there were other items that are also still listed in the financial report for this year. This wasn't, this was not every single over budget item, but these were some of the biggest ones. And for that to be a total of five hundred eighty-three thousand dollars, as Mr. Turner was saying, we can increase our monthly budget, we can increase what we have in circulation monthly by dial, by dialing back some of these expenses. And so I wanted to just pause to see, and so for example, uh, there will be some administrative actions taken this evening um around policies for making sure that we aren't as wasteful with gas and city employee vehicles. Making sure that we have procedures and proper protocols in place in each department to make sure that folks aren't using those vehicles as personal uh vehicles, things like that, proper protocols and procedures that either have to be tightened up or have to be created. That's going to be our best approach to making sure that we can dial some of this back. And before I go further, I wanted to just give the floor to anybody that might have a question or comment about that.
The, the, there are a few items that stand, stood out when I read this report and I got it the other day. Uh, one of them is the gas and oil for the street department, street department alone. Now, does that just include the street department or is that sanitation and others for the gas and oil? I know they have a gas pump out there. We used to have it over here in the hell. Yeah. And everybody that had a car went over and got gas.
Yeah.
You know, is, how is this monitored when they fueled up by vehicle?
Uh, I don't think we, I don't, so from my assessment, we don't have a system where cars are checked out. We don't have a system where
That's forty thousand dollars right there over what they have been doing. Another item that stood out would, excuse me, is the sanitation department contract labor. Uh, you know, fifty-five thousand over the budget.
Uh, the budget, the budget was fifty-five thousand. We went a hundred sixty-six thousand over. And I believe with with this would have been one of the purchases of the trucks that was made recently. No?
No. I was about to say, using a lot of flowy language, these are the things that we talked about also.
Yeah.
These were the the unapproved rentals. These were the unapproved contract labor, all of the things that that just happened. And and we didn't know they were happening. And so what Mayor Whitfield said, we, we, these are the things when uh Mr. Turner talked about their drop off from July to September. These are the things that I kind of started making go away and he's continuing it. I mean, you got some
I knew there was some money, but I didn't know where.
We had a lot of, we had a lot of overtime in different departments and we had a lot of contract labor and some of those things we just kind of made them go away. So they're over budget because some of them were never approved. So when it says zero, that means there was never an appropriation that made by this body, but the money was spent in those areas.
Any other?
Well. The sanitation department travel, what exactly is that? So that is for what?
I'm not sure why our sanitation department would be traveling, but that 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 hot was highlighted for the same reason that you're asking that question.
They're just miscategorized.
Yeah. Let me see, but that doesn't look right.
Might be more contract payments, but it's just miscat. That'd be my guess. I don't know. I'm just guessing.
Travel, do we pay expenses for when we rent? Um, a sanitation truck, do we cover their gas and mileage?
No, 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 no. I'm thinking that when it got entered into the system, it went into the wrong category.
Um.
Because travel, they're they're only budgeting five, five hundred dollars.
And and they went over eighty thousand.
Yeah, I'm just trying to see where it goes.
Yeah, I I bet they go somewhere else, but I mean, the next message, just my guess.
Yeah, I I think, I think you're right.
But to uh to address the question, these are areas that are being looked at. These are questions that have been asked of department heads. There's a long list of things to to dive into, but um Mr. Turner has stated accurately that our monthly budget expenses or our monthly budget operating um budget has increased slowly, and I just want to make sure that we continue to go that route. Or decrease, I'm sorry, decrease, sorry, decrease slowly. And I want to make sure that we continue to go that route. So these are some of the priorities that definitely we'll be looking at. The cell phone service, that that's a really big number. I'm finding out who has cell phones, how many lines we have that are still, they're still being paid for, they aren't active. So and a lot of these are just, I think, system checks and um system checks and structure oversight, but yeah.
Now, on on certain items, I like that because I'm being admin, right? So I kind of want to explain a couple of these things, but as far as things like the supplies, what we typically do, we get, we'll buy supplies. And so they kind of hit admin automatically when we use a credit card or whatever. And so and then we kind of hand them out to the various departments. So they'll, the fire department, police, whatever, they'll come get paper towels and pens and paper and ink and stuff like that. And so when we typically, if a department can't order its supplies and we know that that department is ordering supplies, then we'll code it to that particular department. And some instances, we just buy some things, about toilet paper, paper towels, uh, copy paper and things of that nature, and then we kind of shell them out. And the same thing is with cell phone service. We had talked about kind of coding it to, we get just like the health insurance, we pay one premium. And when I get the bill, I kind of break everybody out. And I kind of code it to each department. And so uh I prob- probably need to do the same thing for cell phone service. It's still high. But it's 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 very, it's very overstated for admin. Because some of that should be applied to the police department, uh, street and sanitation, landfill, whatever. The grant expenses, there was no budget for it, and that was a mistake I had made. Uh, this is the budget for teen court. And so we've been doing it the last two or three years. And so what happens is they, uh, I think it's the Walton Foundation or that, yeah. And so they go through the state of Arkansas. We pay the grant expenses. Uh, we pay the stipends to the the U's that are participating in teen court and the administrators of the grant. And then the state will, the state reimburses us. They get the money from the Walton Foundation, but they reimburse us. So it's like a zero. Whatever we spend that, we'll get the exact same amount back. So for admin, a lot of these expenses that are listed are things that we pay, but they're used by, uh, yeah, the other departments.
Even in that, we want to make sure we get those.
Yeah, the cell phone is still high. We're trying to get the cell phone down there.
Uh, Mr. Turner, if I may.
Yes.
Uh, as relation to this, now that the Mayor Whitfield has identified these things, uh, uh, we need a budget reconciliation so to make sure that that we're in compliance with the audit. If we've spent the money and it's already been approved by the council, the council needs to to approve that, that they've already approved and they did determine whether they're going to ratify what's already been spent.
Amendment.
Yes, sir.
But we can't do that unless they want to. And on, now it's passed, but pulling teeth. You can get an amended budget.
But what I'm saying is this, as you go forward before the end of the year, if you look at the expenditures, those that the council agree with, they can approve.
Okay.
Those that they don't agree with, then they're not approved, but you address the issue of being over budget, is what I'm saying.
But some of you, I mean, if I'm hearing you correctly, you can go back and recode, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can just recode it. I mean, cause it, yeah, I've done that before in a company that I work for. You just recode it to the appropriate line.
Particularly the supplies, a lot of times we don't like I said, we pay it ahead, I mean, we pay the credit card statement. The credit card statement isn't telling us much. So you have to kind of get the invoices and purchase orders and and things of that nature. It's kind of hard. Sometimes getting the purchase orders from the department heads or whoever ordered them or someone, someone may have an invoice and they've, they don't know where it was or received. So it's kind of hard to code it. Sometimes I have to guess, but I don't like doing it too much. So I I I usually just uh just code it in admin. But it can be, if I get uh additional information, I typically I do recode the expenses.
I mean, because if they, if they have a like, I assume they might would have like a supply budget, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, you could just code it to the department.
That's if I know that they are the ones who, but I don't want to guess a lot of times.
Yes. Any other discussion? All right, moving on to our next um line of business, uh, Delta Catalyst, twenty twenty-five Delta Catalyst Fund, Delta Regional Authority. This can be found pages two through eleven on the back of the summary, but the summary over overspending summary table, page two to eleven. Uh, to the credit, uh, Mr. The credit of Mr., where am I blanking? Mr. Anthony, sorry. The credit of Mr. Anthony and Mr. Said Rose, they submitted for a grant a few, was this last year actually, late last?
This is, this is in July.
July, yeah. So in July of this year, they submit for a grant through um through this organization. It's a DRA grant. As many of you know, we have bypass pumps that some of our ponds or some that are basically powering some of our pumps. And we need to get off of those because that's inferring debt every month, or not debt, it's inferring cost that we don't need to bear each month. And so this is a seventy-five thousand dollar award for the repairs pump station. They're moving those bypass pumps. You can look through, this is the full contract that's in here, pages two through eleven. And I will be meeting with Mr. Said Rose to determine what are our most critical need areas, what which pumps are our most critical need, uh, needed pumps to be removed. And this might, just off of the numbers alone, this might be able to get us off three, but definitely two, definitely two pumps. So I definitely want to thank Mr. Anthony and Mr. Rose for submitting to this grant.
If I may, I don't want to leave a third person out. Um, Ms. Ms. Sharon Lee.
Sharon.
Over, over in the water department. And and this is, um, I got a call in July on a Friday from the representative. I'm, I can't remember her name. She told me we had a deadline. Yeah, she said, yeah, she said, we got a deadline coming up in seven days. And you guys have a grant that you can apply for. And she said, can I email you the application? Because I don't want to miss, I don't want you to miss the deadline. And on Sunday, I called her at home late one Sunday night because I didn't get it. And she said, I'm sorry, I didn't get it out in my email. And I said, I'm sorry for calling you. She said, no problem. And she sent it to me on a Sunday night. So on Monday morning, I walked into the water department and I said, um, I asked him to forgive me. I said, who, Sharon? And then she raised her hand and I said, Ms. Lee, and I had talked to Mr. Rose. And we worked on this application. We finished it and all three of us contributed to it. We finished it in two days. We got it in by that Friday and Mayor Whitfield let me know two weeks ago it had been awarded. Um, and I asked her along the way, I said, can we buy sewer pumps with this? And she said, uh, what, why do you need sewer pumps? This is a strange story for people who don't live in Helena. And I explained to her what our sewer pump situation was. She told me we could, and so we applied for, we got it. And I did immediately go over and and tell them and I just wanted to congratulate them because I thought it was a good team experience that we had, and I wanted to let them know what we could do when we worked on things and worked toward a purpose. But uh, yes, we've probably over the last uh few years spent between gas, overtime, pump rental, we may have spent over two million dollars in our water department in wastewater on sewer pumps. And it came to light um about four years ago or so, and there's been a lot of discussion about it, but there was very little effort to to fix it. And so yeah, um. I tried to make this a a step towards fixing it and you guys approved some invoices and I think Mayor Whitfield, he immediately recognized what I was telling him about trying to get these sewer pumps uh fixing. So he's put an effort into it and so trying to just continue to get that that situation rectified so we don't lose so much money in wastewater.
That's good.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're currently on five, and like I said, this gets us off two, maybe three, maybe.
Yeah.
That that would be a huge cost save. And, and questions?
Well, I just want to bring out one fact that we've got one pumping station that carries like the hospital, it it pumps water out there. That station has caused us a lot of problems over the years. And that station a- alone is very important to this community, very, very important to this community. And I want to make sure that we, we're aware of that, that you are as mayor, that that particular station has been down quite a bit and and can cause us a lot of problems. That's one of the stations that we need to look at strongly and make sure that we uh have a backup when some of this stuff breaks down.
Absolutely. I thank you for saying that, Mr. Quinn.
On Oakland Drive, the station I'm referring to.
Mr. Frank Clancy took me on a site visit, if you will, to see where all the pumps were. And these pumps are very out of sight, out of mind, which I think increases the urgency for us to get off of them. And um as I mentioned just a moment ago, I'll be meeting with Mr. Rose to determine especially just where our critical need areas are. And don't, oh, don't rule out a possible invitation for each of us to go look at these pumps. I think it's important for everybody to know where they are, what they do. I think a lot of us mindlessly flush the toilet and don't think that something powering that to happen. So
But Frank took you around, gonna take you around, show you all the pumping state.
Any, any other discussion about? Any discussion about? Thank you. All right. So we're moving on to our third order of new business. This can be found on page twelve of your packet. And I tried to make sure that the page numbers are at the bottom so everybody can follow along appropriately. This is a drafted ordinance included in your packets for the formation of a water commission for Helena, West Helena Water Company. As all of us know, that we used to have a water commission until it was dissolved and that was, um, no, that no longer existed. And I will give the floor to Mr. St. Columbia to just mention some of his rationale behind, we considering water commission and what he thinks the pros are.
In fact, and I'm gonna take you back to many, many, many year ago, uh, when, um, Mr. Burris, I can't think of his first name, but his last name was.
Charles Burris. Charles, was it that one?
What is that? He was, he, he ran a water company for years. We had in reserve millions of dollars in reserves. Uh, we had CDs back in those days. I, I remember I, uh, uh, you, nothing happened in this community that didn't go through him and his office. And he was very, very particular. But I'm speaking now of the Helena Water Department that we had set up before the cities merged. The city of Helena was, there, there's a federal law that requires, uh, water companies nationally to have reserves in case of a national emergency. There's a federal law concerning that. We've, uh, we've been in violation of that for quite some time. But, uh, in the old days, we had, we had a lot of money and I ordered the company for, and reserves for that. And that's why commissioners, I think, are important, uh, to have and why we should have a, a water commission like Helena used to have many years ago that looked after it. And that takes the pressure off of us as a, a city council that we have a group of business people. And I remember it being composed, we had a lawyer on, on that commission, we had a banker on that commission. Uh, we had, uh, three businessmen that had successful businesses in this, in this community in Helena. And, uh, they met, I think, once a month with the water manager and with oversaw the actions and, and what the water commi- the water company was doing. And they caught, they stopped a lot of problems before they started, these commissioners did. The best I remember and recollect in my many years in serving, uh, in this community. And that's why I think it's very, very important that we bring, since we're putting our water company back together, uh, as, as one today. We need to have a commission that oversees the water company and, and that will be a big help to this community. And, uh, I had, uh, a local gentleman, Robert, uh, Cheek draw up a, uh, ordinance that we could look at and I gave everybody, you should have one, uh, in front of you. Uh, this was one that he drew up, uh, uh.
So he's pricing along now?
Sir.
So he's pricing along now?
Yeah.
Anyway, uh, uh, I, I, I want you to look at this ordinance that he drew up. And we, we need to, I, I think that the, uh, the, the water company should have at least five, uh, commissioners on the board. And it should have at least, uh, uh, one attorney and one banker and other businessmen that are involved and, uh, live here in the community and have, uh, uh, businesses here for this community that use a lot of water. So that's my proposal and why I think that we should have a water commission for the city of Helena, West Helena.
Hey Joe, I'm, 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 I agree with you. I, I would say though that, um.
Are you, you're looking at the ordinance?
Yes, sir. On six, on six point two though, one of the, um, critiques or criticisms was in times past when we had a commission, um, sometimes there were recommendations like, for instance, to write for grants. The commission was not responsive to that. I'd like to see some type of language like.
This, this is just a proposal.
Like, like something like, that we might would say in six point two, like the city council can make recommendations concerning potential grant proposals, infrastructure and impro- improvements that are in the best interest of the city. Some, some type of language of that nature, but other than that, I'm for it.
This is just an idea to get us started and looking into some of the things that we need to do. Uh, but, uh, th- th- this was, uh, we, we can, we can change this ordinance to fit our need. And that's, uh, what we need to do is look at it and, and, um, uh, discuss what our needs are, but we need to, I think, form a commission to make sure that we, we build a reserve in the water company separate from, uh, the general funds of this, of this city. Uh, so in case of a na- earthquake or a, a national emergency, we have no funds set aside for that. And the federal law required that to be done.
Yes, sir. Um, Mr. St. Columbia, if I can, in, you were here consolidation. You and I were here consolidation, right? The city attorney was here consolidation.
Right.
Do you remember why we don't have a water commission? Do you remember why?
Well, I remember we merged with West Helena.
Do you remember we met out at the college? We had the transition team. We met at the college. The Arkansas Municipal League sent their attorneys over.
Yeah.
And they advised us to go without a water commission. Do you, you remember that?
Yeah.
Okay. They invite, and the reason why they advised us to go with it without a water commission is because they told us the water commission structure was both outdated. And then it removed the people who were responsible from public view. They weren't responsive to citizens. They're not elected. And so we did that on advice of the Arkansas Municipal League.
Well, there's pros and cons on all of this.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And you mentioned many, many years. What we know today, what we absolutely know today is that all of the infrastructure work that was not done fell under the watch of both water commissions and mayors and city councils and water directors and everybody who was involved in that chain. We know more today than we knew ten years ago or fifteen years ago or twenty five years ago. We know more. I'll give you an example, though, of what has happened. Remember, they also advised, we got rid of all of our commissions that were not required by law. One, if you may remember, we didn't, we got rid of civil service. Remember? We got rid of civil service.
We had a civil service.
And you at the time on the council and, and Councilman Hollowell, you, you, you guys really wanted civil service. And when you got enough votes to do it, you, you recreated civil service, right? And, and I opposed it the same way I do this. I opposed it. But what happened when Mayor Hollowell was mayor? He had to come back and say, wait a minute. The civil service thing doesn't work anymore in this day and time. And we ended up abolishing civil service all over again. That happened. These are true facts, right? We're going back in time to a time that doesn't exist anymore. We know more about what's happening with water today than we ever have. The reason why we don't have reserves, I talked to Mr. Cheek as well back this summer. He talked to me and he was really in favor of a water commission. I asked him the question and, and what he talked to me about is basically the same thing that you're saying tonight, which is we don't have any water reserve. We have millions and millions of dollars. Yeah, but two things, we didn't do any work to improve our infrastructure. They kept the rates artificially low so they wouldn't have to raise the rates instead of doing the work. And then the other thing is there's this narrative that's out in the public that is completely false. And that is, there's a belief that the city spent all of the water's money. I mean, in a frivolous kind of way. Well, water is subject to audits every year. It's subject to audits every year. So that's completely untrue. What do we know from twenty twenty one? I talked about this in twenty twenty three when we had the first water crisis, but maybe you don't remember. We had a memo, a memo from the water department in twenty twenty one. I still have it at my house right now. It came from water. They passed it around to the council. Uh, then Mayor Smith had a representative from water who presented to us. And they had been using CDs from water to pay water-related expenses, water-related expenses. So they were using CDs to pay water-related expenses. I'm not saying it was used in an improper way, but it was used to pay water-related expenses. They weren't reporting this to the body. We found out in that memo. And they misunderstood that they weren't bringing in enough revenue in water. They blamed all their financial problems on an ice storm from February, February of twenty twenty one. I sent you all a copy of it. I emailed it to you. If you go back to twenty twenty three, I sent you a copy of the memo. So what I'm trying to tell you is, is that everything starts in the water department. From the water department directors to the mayor, to the city council. At this point in time, what you're proposing is that with our water situation, the way it is, that we take it and pick it up and give it to some people who now have to catch up to where we are and learn what we already know about where we are. What did I tell you when I was sitting at the head of the table? We need to replenish our reserves. We need to replenish our reserves. We know this now. We know this now. We don't have to have a water commission to tell us that. I talked to the treasurer about replenishing our reserves. What happened to all of our reserves? We had to use them to do what? Build a new well. And well number nine went down. There's nobody better in this community to handle the water issues right now than the people who sit here at this table who have gone through every issue that has occurred in the last two, three, four years. Nobody better, nobody more equipped. The commission is the council when you don't have a commission. The other thing is everything we say, everything I'm saying right now can be listened to by anybody in the community. If we deal with water, they'll see it. If we don't deal with water, they'll see it. But nobody saw what the commissions were doing and what the commissions were not doing. And one day, it came back and think about it this way. We had water directors who didn't recognize the financial side of water and that was that we needed a rate increase. Sanitation fees were not being turned over to the city. And it wasn't being acknowledged in water. That's the director's job. That's the director's job. That's the director's job to report that. He will report that to the commission. He or she will report that to the commission, the same way they were reported to the mayor or the council. So it's not a commission that's going to solve all of our problems. It's having people who understand the situation that we're in and who are equipped and able to handle it. To handle what's happening. And it's everybody at this table's responsibility to understand what's happening in water right now. Because that's what you're elected to do. And to pass it on to a water commission is to say, I'm giving my responsibility to somebody else. I'm giving my, my elected responsibility to somebody else because it may be too much for me to handle. And I don't agree with that at all. We had water crisis. I went out in the streets and watched them dig in the holes. I spent hours and hours. You see Mr. Ken Wildin in the back. We talked for hours and hours when I was in the mayor's chair. I promised him that I would continue to talk with him even after my time was over. And I will do that to make sure I know what's happening in water. And I think that's everybody's elected responsibility. But if you give it to a commission, our citizens will not be able at this, in the same way, of course, they can attend commission meetings, but people watch council meeting. And this is the way they can see and hear everything that happens in water. Every time we had a water disaster, we had a council meeting so that people could tune in and find out what's going on. There's no way that I'm about to agree that we should turn around in this moment when we have all of the things that need to happen in water and give it away to a commission. And now I don't know, people don't know. And nobody knows what's happening in water just because some people think they can do it better. Anybody who wants to be on the commission, filing deadline is in August. You can be on the commission. You can take a seat at this table and you can be on the commission. But I think this is our responsibility. I don't think it's anybody else's.
Well, Mr. Anthony, I, I will stick with St. Columbia for just a second. Mr. Anthony has articulated much I want to say. However, uh, the other thing that we have to understand, we have consent administrative orders that we have to comply with at this point. The timing of this is critical. Everyone at this table that's elected for a city council, uh, has an obligation, if you have not been here for ten years, to go and receive the training related to water. And also in the last latest session, they added sewer. And in the midst of this, the one thing we must understand that from a administrative standpoint, the building is on fire and you're saying, okay, ignore the fire. Give it to somebody else and let them try to put it out and we'll take our time in doing it. Well, we have to be as urgent and deliberate in what we're doing. And the issue is the city council, I agree with Mr. Anthony one hundred percent, that people look at this, you get a thousand views for these, these council meetings. People don't see the other commissions. I meet with the other commissions. People don't see those meetings. They're not even recorded. They're somewhere, you have the minutes, you have the audio recording, but they're not viewed on YouTube like these meetings. And the council has, council meetings are viewed by everyone. Now, the priorities are, we, we're in the midst of trying to do, uh, applications and get closings for loans and grants and et cetera, and this is not the time to hand it off. It's a time for the public to know everything that's going on and I think you all are best suited. I encourage all of you all to go forward and continue to, uh, get your training to get it done and encourage the mayor to go as well. Uh, the issue that you have right now, first, stop having other people draft ordinances. I'm the city attorney. You want an ordinance drafted? I have an office, I have a secretary back there. You can see her anytime with St. Columbia. I have no opposition to you at all. My all doors are open at all the time. You want an ordinance drafted, please stop by. Now, as it relates to these, uh, as it relates to this, the other things I, I want to understand, I want you to understand is the engineer is working diligently to try to get some things done. Mr. Wildin, he's been working diligently. Uh, and we have to go forward with that plan. In the midst of this, when, in reading this, it's suggesting, well, we'll do this in thirty days, point somebody within sixty days. The city shouldn't even be approaching having a commission. First, Mr. Lee doesn't, doesn't agree with it. Uh, and they are our risk management group. They don't agree with it all. Uh, second, transparency is key for many people as we're going, going forward. And I agree with Mr. Anthony that much of your funds that were spent, we've been in chaos for a while. This is leading to water and the commissions blew a lot, the brunt of it. While you say they had millions, it makes no sense for you to have millions and you still have pipes not fixed. You still have, uh, all the other things related to the water company that were not done. That's the criminal of each one of us having holes in our roofs and saying, hey, I got twenty thousand dollars in the bank, but my roof isn't there. And so that's the practical thing that the commissions did and the council's committed, uh, continued. Is there were much needs that needed to be met. However, we were bragging about having money in the bank, but wasn't fixing the infrastructure. Uh, there's a lot of infrastructure. There are millions upon millions of dollars to be fixed. And for those also, I wanted to speak to process. Some people may be concerned about processes. You go through loans and grants. The city, the engineer has to, uh, submit plans and I don't have to submit plans before any money is paid to the city. Engineer has to submit, submit that he has, that this work has been done and certified before a draft is cut. There's a lot of money or more mismanagement, I think, that the city is, uh, gonna have to deal with. Uh, they're not going to give any money until the, the work is done. You're approved for it, but then you have to draw it down. Take for instance, the landfill grant. It was done in landfill, uh, bond. It was done in two thousand eight. We still have a lockbox agreement. Where all the money is paid by the bank and then the city gets to the, the reserves for, for what was, what was not spent during the timeframe. And so, we know the concerns that citizens may have, the best thing they need is transparency and discussions here and to know what's going on. As it relates to the consent administrative order, we do need licensed personnel. I have advised ev- everyone consistently, we need to advertise everywhere we can to get a general manager that it, that is, has all of the licenses. We've been working with the current one. But we need to keep moving forward, trying to get someone who has all the licenses to go forward. Not only that, all the personnel below him before, uh, be licensed. Also, a financial issue that we need to address is the incentive to make sure that people have the licenses. What we do as you get the license, is there a set of rewards system for them to get licenses? Uh, we need trained personnel and going forward and those are decisions that need to be made at this table while we are still going forward. And that's not something to hand off to someone at this critical juncture. Uh, I will review this ordinance and, and update it with St. Columbia for, to make sure it complies with the law. Uh, however, uh, as, as city attorney, I don't think this is the right time for you all to do it. I give advice. I don't vote. Uh, but I will, I will look at it. I will, we'll work it and, uh, represent it to you after I've looked at, looked at it and make sure it complies with the law and go forth from there. But again, I think that your due diligence, uh, you should be moving like, like the hat that you have. You and I don't have much hair. But the hat that we have left is on. But the hat that we have left is on fire. We can be moving like that.
As Speaker. I had no intentions of turning the water company over to five individuals to run it. No, that's not the purpose of a water commission, or should not be. But to help us oversee the water. So in case we miss something, yeah, I think that the water commission would be under our di- direction.
Uh, no, sir.
Answer to the mayor and to us.
No, sir, it's independent.
Sir.
No, sir, it's independent.
That's my thinking.
They operate on their own. May- maybe you want to have an advisory board?
Call it what you'd like.
Well, that, that's different. Legally, that's a different thing. If you, I, I, I wouldn't be opposed to some kind of advisory board, just people who, who want to be involved as citizens. A commission gives it away to the commission.
Well, I don't want to give it away, no. Maybe we need to call it advisory. Board. I, I remember back then, we had one. We had one, they called it commission. And, uh, it had millions of dollars in reserve. And I remember, uh, uh, the, uh, the trinkling down of all that money. It, it disappeared. And, uh, I'd, I'd like to see our, our water company sustained better than the way it has been the last few years.
Absolutely, and Mr. St., I don't, I don't.
We ought to do something.
I don't, I don't dispute that at all. I'm just saying that the internal documentation, we have to dispel the notion that the city took the water department's money. I've been hearing that for years, that's, that's false. That's, that's false. The water department spent this money in equipment. Started to fail under the Smith administration, they were cashing in CDs. They were sp- on water-related issues, but they were also bleeding ever new because they couldn't even turn over the sanitation fee. So we have to tell people when they say that, tell them the truth. That's not true. The water department money, because it's separate from the general fund money. No matter what you saw over the past couple of years, that's not what happened in the water department. Now, I don't, I don't have a problem with people's advice and people's involvement because we had, Mr. Cheek was one of them. There was another gentleman who came in and they provided proposals for the, the rate increase. And I think that was a good, healthy experience for all of us. And so I don't, I don't dismiss that it can be beneficial to have citizens involved. I'm not dismissive of that at all. The water commission issue is one where I don't want it to leave public view. I think everybody needs to know what's going on in water.
Absolutely.
Because it's so, it's so crucial right now. I mean, we've had periods of time where we had no water at all. Uh, we, we are not far from having a disaster and people need to understand. It's just the honest truth is we're not far from a disaster at, on any given day, uh, at our treatment plant. Uh, you know, the, the wells in Helena need to be, on the east side, need to be, uh, we need a new well. Uh, we, we have all these leak issues and I think we need to keep this stuff front and center for the public.
What's, what's St. Columbia, if I may? One of the things that if you remember, you've been on the council for quite a time, if you remember when we first did the landfill, we did the bond, we did a citizens advisory, uh, group for that. If you're not trying to give away authority, if you want somebody to advise you, there's no issue with it. I can draft that ordinance, I can meet with you. We can go through it, we can get a group of people. I'm not saying, I'm not saying the city doesn't need advice, I'm not saying all that, but as it relates to once you do a commission, you've handed over to them. And that's why I'm saying the timing of it, that's, that's what I'm talking about. And, uh, as far as advisory, we need all the advice we can get. If you have business people that want to form, if you want to form a citizens advisory committee and, and, and advise them and go forward, advise the bodies, say, hey, we want to meet regularly and get, here's updates city, and they come and make a presentation. We can drive ordinance and that and, and get it done. I can work with you on that.
Food for all.
So what I.
Yes, sir. If I may, man, one, one thing. Mr. St. Columbia, I appreciate your concern. I just want to make that clear that we're not, we're not debating, I'm just saying, as City Attorney, I don't think it's the right time, but advisory, we can take all the advice we can get. Okay? So I'm not disputing you, I just want to make sure we know that. Thank you, man.
So what I advise everybody to do is I do advise everybody to read the ordinance, and I think that some of the points that are instilled or, or, or put down on paper I, I address some of the, the expertise that I think we, that's the common, that's the common thread, I think, through our conversation, that we want people that understand our water systems, we want people to understand what our water systems need and how to keep them maintained. I think throughout several, or throughout some departments, we do have a lack of understanding just maintenance, cost, general equipment and even our, uh, more critical equipment. So I do encourage everybody to read through the fullness of the ordinance to see what it says. And I also encourage you to speak to your, to the people in your wards, the people in your communities to understand their views on commission versus an advisory. Because I do think we have the space to welcome more, more expertise on this stuff. I do think we have that, this management.
Here we felt. So it's just a basic functional thing to brush to think about. One of the things that Attorney Valley mentioned was the consent order. And he said that as far as the training even around this table, I know I've been to water, I've not been to sewer. He said we have to do.
Sewer was just passed this year.
And so, because we all, you know, we have different careers, we have different schedules and all that. Do you think that maybe we could talk with Mr. Steinberg? And possibly see is there a way we can do this via Zoom or via something so that we can get that done? I mean, considering, I mean, do you think maybe they would think about that?
Rural Water does, and I think Communities Unlimited does as well, but we, we can speak to both of them, well, Mr. Steinberg retired, but we can speak to Rural Water and, uh, and Communities Unlimited to try to get something done, uh, and go forward. But the training, I think, even for those who, like Mr. Ethel, Mr. St. Columbia, Ms. Davis, who have been there more than ten years, they, uh, they, it would still be beneficial to, to be at training, that's what I'm saying. They're exempted by law, but I'm just saying, uh, to go forward.
I think, I think that's a good idea. I think that, uh, right now, as, as it currently sits, we are all the body that's presently responsible for our water supply, so I do think it's a great idea that everybody that's around the table, we have, we should, and I can reach out, see if we can do that somewhere local or even have a joint time. I'll do that. Thank you. Any other comments before we? Thank you, Mr. St. Columbia. All right, so moving on to our, our new business point number four. For our garbage truck purchase, um, I've sat and spoken with, um, Ms., uh, our, our city clerk, Ms. Ramsey, a little bit on this. I've also met with our, uh, some of our sanitation department personnel. What we're going to be doing is moving forward, we're trying to use the salvage value of one of our down trucks to, to get two trucks. It's a very critical time for us to try to take on an additional one hundred thousand dollars that we financed and ran into trouble, forgot a new garbage truck that took us a little bit over a hundred thousand dollars. So I will be meeting with Mr. Sellers and Mr. Clarence from the sanitation department to discuss the best need or the, the needs for our sanitation department right now to have two new used trucks to get the most bang for our buck. So that will be priority for, for us, and that's a smart financial decision, so that we're not taking on, we can get two new trucks in circulation, keep our routines and routes, um, up to speed without taking on necessary burdens, yeah, that we don't have to take on. Any, any?
Where does it stand with the insurance on our truck that was damaged?
So it is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Ramsey, the municipality would put liability on it?
It was salvage title.
Salvage title.
And they don't have liability on it, and we're waiting on the check from the insurance company now.
Well, what was that? I couldn't hear it.
We're wait, we're waiting on the, the check for, from the insurance company now. But the, but they would give us liability on it if, if we wanted to go that route.
Okay.
As you'll see for new business bullet point number five, you see, you should see for, um, water invoice pay or payments, for invoices for payments to the water company for services provided, and these do include some of the bypass pumps that we were just talking about. These are from Tincarva, two from Tincarva, one from Xylem and one from Jones Hydro. And as these meet the threshold for, uh, suspended, we need to approve these.
If I, if I may say, uh, on these, that's not competitive, been waiver ordinance on these relating to it. Here's one of the things that I forgot to mention when I was talking to you today, Mayor. These four, all of the things that are related to make sure we come in compliance with the consent administrative order. Uh, we just need to go forward and, and get them approved and keep moving forward. We don't want to slow down the train, is what I'm saying. These, all of these that relate to it, that we have the pumps and Tincarva and, uh, Xylem. Uh, all of these are addressed in the consent administrative order. And these are necessary expenditures that above the mayor's spending limit. Uh, have, I, I think we have to, as it relates to water and the consent administrative orders, I think we have to have a, a balance. The council needs to know, but also we need to make every expenditure that the engineer is telling us, hey, we got to make this paper, we got to keep going forward. And so, in some of these, what you'll be getting is some action is being taken and that's been brought to you after the fact, if we need to go forward because we need to go we don't need to slow down the process. Do, do y'all get what I'm saying? Okay. But these just need to be ratified by the, by the body.
Want to do them individually or as a, as a group?
If you.
Well, it just itemize them.
Right, I think we can itemize them as a do them. You have a Jones Hydro invoice. Uh, give my glasses. Jones Hydro invoicing amount of, is that the?
Eleven thousand seven hundred ninety-nine?
Yes, sir, ma'am, if you would, yes, sir. Jones Hydro in, in amount of, it's, it's invoice dated ten twenty-four, twenty, twenty-five, is an amount of eleven thousand seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars twelve cents. We have another Jones Hydro, uh, in amount of five thousand six hundred fifty-eight dollars. We have Xylem in amount of six thousand five hundred eighty-five dollars and eighty cent. Uh, the invoice date is ten twenty-nine. And we have a Tenkara, uh, in the amount, yeah, Tenkara, thank you, Mr. Ethel. Tenkara, uh, the invoice date is ten twenty-nine and it's an amount of four thousand eight hundred eighty-four dollars forty-two cent. Have another from Tenkara in amount of four thousand six hundred ninety dollars fifty-eight cent. And the invoice date for it is also ten twenty-nine, uh. I think you all can prove those as a group because those are issues that have to do with the consent administrative orders, my understanding.
Well, Jones Hydro, I think, was when the pump station went out on Oakland.
Right.
Tenkara is the, uh, is the, uh, pump repair, the sewer pump repair. And Xylem is probably the pump room.
Right.
All those things are critical towards our operation of our system on a daily basis, and so we don't need to make those people mad. Or we did have some bad payment history with those people, we accept the record that and we want to keep it. So, uh, move, move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Vicina? Taking a vote on the ordinances for the, on the bills for the water.
Right here. Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Ethel?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
This is St. Columbia?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Six years.
Motion passes, thank you. So this is not one last, um, item that's not listed on your, uh, packets, but go ahead, I'm sorry. Uh, we, we got a phone call this week about potential payments to be made for our, for the jail, for the jail situation that we currently have going on with the county and what we are waiting on right now. That, we were told that that would also, that almost entered a judgment. Um, and so what we're waiting on right now is confirmation for a plan that we can use to make payments to us that, we're currently waiting. We have payments that are, um, we have payments that not, I wouldn't say pending, that we discussed possible payment options, but we're waiting to see if they will accept what they will accept monthly.
Right. For the public, say, it was hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars.
Sixty-eight thousand?
One hundred sixty-eight.
One hundred sixty-eight.
Is what the city owed the county for jail fees, uh, prior to the lawsuit. As part of the lawsuit, the city was supposed to, when the, when the hospital sold, pay them the one sixty-eight. The hospital did not sell. And consequently, they want to enter a judgment, they're asking the court to get guns judgment, where they can garnish the city and take the hundred and sixty-eight thousand. That's what the county wants to do. And so we met with John Wilkinson via conference call, the mayor, the city clerk, myself and city treasurer. And we made an offer to the county for a payment plan to pay X amount of dollars per month, and we'll wait on their response. And so we were bringing it forward to council, the council just approved that, hey, just give the mayor and, and I the order to talk to John Wilkinson, say, hey, to get it resolved so we can make monthly payments and, if we can.
I'm clerk.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. St. Columbia?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Ethel?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Vicina?
Yes.
Six years.
Motion passes, thank you. That's the end of our agenda, there.
We adjourned then. We done it. Good job.
So we'll be in the charge. Thank you. Thanks.